Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
The time is six thirty nine P M. And the City of Inkster Planning Commission Meeting is now called to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Nolan.
Present.
Commissioner Chisholm.
Present.
Commissioner Willis. Excused, unexcused.
Mr. Daddell, did you happen to hear from Commissioner Willis?
No.
Absent.
Commissioner McDaniel.
Present.
Commissioner T. Williams.
Present.
Commissioner Hayes Bradford.
Present.
Commissioner Davis.
Did not hear from him either.
Commissioner Hall.
I did hear from him, he will not be able to make it.
Okay.
Excuse.
And then Commissioner A. Williams, present.
We have a call. We are down to item number two, Adoption of the Agenda. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Are there any changes that need to be made to the agenda? Hearing none, the floor is open for a motion to adopt the agenda as is.
So move, support.
It's been properly moved and supported, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All oppose? Motion passes. Item three, Adoption of Minutes. Adoption of August twenty five, August twenty fifth, twenty twenty five meeting minutes. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes.
Is there any changes that need to be made?
There were a few typos in there.
Okay.
I know one Carlisle was misspelled throughout. Y S L A. And then I think miscellaneous. Number eight, I'm trying to go off my memory. Yeah, miscellaneous, misspelled.
So Carlisle needs to be corrected all through the minutes, and the word miscellaneous, which is one of the agenda items, needs to be corrected.
Uh huh, number eight. Item number eight.
Number eight, okay. Anything else?
There was a couple of something, but I can't remember what they are right now, they're just so, they're really just grammatical.
Grammatical, okay.
Yeah, nothing.
Alright, if you think of, you know, while just circle them, we can always.
Yeah, I tried to print them, my printer wouldn't cooperate.
Got you. Alrighty, any other corrections from any other commissioners? Hearing none, the floor is open for a motion to adopt the minutes with corrections.
So move, support.
It's been properly moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All oppose? Motion passes. We're down to item number four, Zoning Ordinance Update. This is a discussion with Consultant A.C. Williams of A-Media for the updating of the Inkster zoning ordinance. Commissioner Williams, you have the floor.
Uh, good evening, everybody. Um, I'm glad to see some faces in the audience.
Yes.
Um, so we did our official zoning kickoff last planning commission meeting, which was last month, correct? Um, and so I wanted to provide everybody an update on where we at with doing a comprehensive overhaul of the zoning ordinance. Um, it is a part of our requirements in becoming a redevelopment-ready community, which is a technical assistance program offered by the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, so the M E D C. Um, we are pretty much ninety-eight percent the way there, the zoning ordinance is the last thing that we have to get done.
Very huge.
It's huge, and so, um, the reason why we want to be certified or be considered a redevelopment-ready community is because it lets developers know that we've streamlined our processes and that we're in a position to hopefully, um, you know, make positive changes in the community. Um, and that includes like our policies, our procedures, and as we can see, a zoning ordinance update that hopefully will benefit not just the residents, but you know, people who are interested in developing here as well, so. I had to remember which way I gotta go with this. Okay.
I think your point's down, down here, center, in front of the podium.
Okay, I'll do it right there, okay. So as a friendly update, I mean, reminder, why is it important to update Inkster zoning? Well, you know, zoning guides how land is utilized and developed, and ours is a bit outdated, um, leading to certain obstacles for housing, businesses, infrastructure, and enforcement. So by updating the zoning ordinance, we can address these challenges and hopefully, um, make our community not only address the needs where we're at in this moment, but make it dynamic enough so that for that future development that I was talking about, we can put ourselves in a position to be accommodating, and nothing that's so rigid that if, you know, something that we wanted to have here was coming, we wouldn't be able to accommodate it because our zoning is either out of date or doesn't allow for things like, uh, missing middle housing or, um, uh, what's some other things, tech, uh, you know, pretty much preparing ourselves for the future, because it's not about just what we need to fix now, it's also about the future as well. And so, um, we'll streamline the development process, hopefully enhance land use efficiency, foster economic growth, and improve overall quality of life. It's about land, safety, growth, and regulation. And so, uh, when we did our master plan, which was adopted in March of twenty twenty five, that was pretty much our framework for what the goals of the community are for the next, well, we have to update it every five years, but it's really about the next twenty years. And the main priorities that came out of that master plan was that we needed to modernize our zoning ordinance. It needs to be clear, user-friendly, update the graphics, and so forth. Um, the master plan itself outlines key development areas, including mixed-use walkable downtown developments and affordable and diverse housing, green infrastructure, um, and of course transit-oriented developments, especially like on places like Michigan Avenue, right? Um, completing our streets, making our sidewalks more friendly for pedestrians, and hopefully updating our equipment for like bus stops or, uh, walking, um, help me out, y'all. Crosswalks, there we go. And so, um, as I mentioned earlier, uh, we also are required to do this as a part of RRC best practice. Um, and one of the main things I want to point out about that is including something called form-based zoning. So right now, the way our zoning is set up is more about how the land could be used, um, whether, you know, restrictions or, it's not a lot of positive language in there, but form-based code is actually about how we want it to look. So if we were using a space like Michigan Avenue as like an example, what would we like that to look in terms of buildings, the types of materials they use, how tall we want them to be, and pretty much creating like the character of our neighborhood, something that we feel says this is Inkster, um, and everything is uniform in a way, um, or complimentary to one another. And then, as I've also mentioned, missing middle housing, so this is not just a crisis for Inkster or just Michigan. Uh, across the country, um, there's not enough missing middle housing in that it's accommodating smaller family sizes, so Inkster's predominantly single-family homes. Um, and the average family size, last time I looked at the data, was about two point eight, uh, or so you either have single professionals who, um, are living by themselves and don't quite need a four-bedroom house. And so, you know, we want to offer those options that are available to that changing demographic because not only, you know, is it more desirable, you know, for attracting, uh, those residents, it's more affordable too, because smaller housing, I would hope, means they don't have to pay as much, right? Any questions or feedback so far?
No.
Alright, so I want, because this is a very long document, and I don't expect everyone to read it line by line while we're here, it's like over a hundred pages of updates. So I wanted to highlight what are some of the priority things that have been updated so far. And so we are strengthening our neighborhoods while adding new housing choices. So if we go to commissioners, if we go to Article Three. Which, there were page numbers on here, but I don't think they got printed. I was trying to make it easy for everyone to go to. So it looks like this, Article Three, zoning districts. And everybody let me know when you're ready to go. So in the beginning, it's definitions, we're skipping past that, that's Article Two, and we're going to Article Three. Yeah, you're almost there. One page that way, there we go. Yep, Article Three. I'm sorry, I forgot the page numbers were on here. And there are cover pages to each Article Two. Not in this, not in our print. Oh, just go straight in. That's, yeah, that should have been a part of it as well. Okay. There it is.
Thank you. Okay, I'm ready.
Alright, and so, as you guys know, part of the master plan had a recommended, and when we did that zoning kickoff, and we talked about the different, uh, zoning districts, it was recommended in the master plan that we consolidated the type of residential neighborhood or zones that we have. And the districts end up being R one, single household residential district. For the audience, um, it's been encouraged that we switch from saying single family to single household or multiple household, because family can be defined differently these days. So if you hear me use that language, it's about, like I said, modernizing it and reflecting what, uh, best practice is it is currently. Um, and so then you have R one and R two, uh, which is two household residential district. And then you have M R D, which is mixed residential district, M R D two, which is the second mixed residential district. And so essentially, we, at first, we had R one, like A, R one B, R one C, and it went from low density to medium density to high density. Low would be considered your single-family houses, like high density would be like your apartments. And so then it was recommended that we kind of consolidated those, because we didn't need all three. So now we have one, um, single household residential district, and then the R two combines both the medium and the high-density districts. So there's no need for the three different types anymore. The mixed residential districts are about combining those retail spaces with residential. So I'm going to keep using Michigan Avenue as an example, um, just imagine having like retail space on the bottom, and then maybe some type of apartments above. And so when we're thinking mixed residential, we're thinking, you know, not only living, but retail space as well. Um, and so we want to, of course, protect the character of the existing family, um, areas or single family or single household areas, uh, but we want to expand those housing options as well. So currently, our ordinance doesn't allow for things called ADUs or accessory dwelling units. Um, imagine like an in-law suite, or if someone works from home, turning their garage into like an office space. Right now, we currently don't zone for that, and so right now, we are trying to, um, allow that as a permitted use in our single, uh, household district areas. Um, and there are, of course, other requirements that come along with that. Um, you know, how many could be on one lot, for example, or where can it be placed in the back of the house or the back of the lot opposed to the front? Um, like I said, it's a long document, so I'm trying to highlight just the key, the key parts here. Um, but other things we want to allow for perhaps are like townhouses or senior housing. Um, so, uh, maybe we have a condo community that allows for like age-restricted, like fifty-five and older, you know, residents, um, or cottage courts. So we're trying to add the, the missing middle and bridge that gap, uh, with both character and affordability, and those are some of the strategies that we can use in order to do that. Uh, some other things that were added to the zoning districts include like our anti-displacement overlay, which, you know, the goal is to keep long-term residents in place and prevents displacement, as this body has heard me say. Uh, I want the, the residents who have been here for a long time, a lot of us generationally, to actually experience the benefits of redevelopment and development. Um, you know, there was a lot of money taken out of our neighborhoods like ours, um, and if people are going to start pouring back in and building it back up, then we deserve to have that experience. We don't deserve to get pushed out. So, um, I think it's important to be intentional about our zoning and making sure that, you know, there's certain areas, if we decide that there's going to be affordable housing or some type of redevelopment, we may designate it as a place where, like I said, we're going to put long-term residents first and come up with a system for how we can make sure that even if, you know, property values go up, that people can still afford to stay in their homes. Okay? Um, and then, of course, clear transition rules between businesses and industries and, you know, certain neighborhoods that may be next to like business or commercial districts. So, um, just for the audience, I'll recap what some of our zoning districts are. And so we have residential, we have business-commercial, we have industrial manufacturing, we have our town center district, we have our parks, public recreation, and environmental. And then overlay districts are like the anti-displacement overlay that I mentioned, where you would apply that over a base zone. So if a base zone is a single household residential district, and we can use that overlay and say, hey, this will also be anti-displacement, and it will have to comply with whatever the rules of that base district is. Everybody with me so far?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so I was going to, we got through that. And then other, oh, and then other overlay districts include planned unit development, so, you know, it could be big apartments or, you know, with common areas. Um, and we're also considering tiny home districts. Uh, we also want to be intentional about that as well. I think we, you know, if we do decide that there's, it makes sense for there to be a tiny home community, of course, we want to have a say on where that goes and what that looks like. Um, but tiny homes are gaining in popularity, they're, you know, an affordable option, um, for, as I mentioned earlier, those smaller households who may not need as much. Um, and so those are our three overlay districts, anti-displacement, planned unit development, and residential tiny home overlay. Any feedback for a move next?
Are you holding questions?
I, we're gonna do it on a public hearing, right?
Yes, we'll be doing that on, on, on the agenda.
Okay.
Item, not public hearing, but, uh, first hearing from the public.
Okay.
That would be item number five.
Thank you. And so, uh, next highlight I wanted to point out was Articles Three through Four, Business and Economic Growth. And so we're supporting small businesses and revitalizing corridors. Um, we want to, as I mentioned, promote mixed-use development in town, in town center and corridors, and then, uh, certain things I want to point out where we prohibit auto-oriented uses. Um, I know we've all been up here before, where, uh, when it comes to auto major, auto minor, where we're saying, uh, whether it be in T C D, and this is also according to our master plan too, that we don't want to obstruct, uh, walkability. Um, and sometimes businesses like auto repair can do that. Um, so limiting those, uh, industries and making way for other ones, like restaurants, coffee shops, you know, maybe small, um, uh, what am I looking for? Clothing shops, things like that, yeah. Yes. Had to think about it for a second, yes.
Can you, for the public, uh, go a little bit more into the town, the T C D, so they'll know what that, exactly what that means?
Yes.
And how that relates to, to our city?
Yes, and so our town center district is like where we could put our civic uses. Um, it's what, like our, our downtown identity, right? Um, and so, uh, if we were, and I, like I said, I apologize again for the numbers not being on here, but, um, there are examples of what that could look like. So. I'll just go, I'll go to the summary table right here. So it's gonna, it's going to emphasize walkability, shop fronts, and mixed use. So it could be retail, it could be, like I said, residential, but it's also about prohibiting things like fueling stations or auto sales repair, standalone drive-throughs. Uh, maybe we want restaurants, but we don't necessarily want like a drive-through or a fast food restaurant. Um, and so T C D or Town Center District is like our downtown identity. It could also, like I said, include tech or civic uses, or maybe even our amphitheater, right? We were thinking about having a T C D, right? So amphitheater, um, think also like cultural and community options, uh, art exhibits, small museums. So those would be like the characteristics of your T C D. Thank you, um, Mr. Daddell, for handing those out. And so for the commissioners, if you want to go until you see a page like this. Because like I said, unfortunately, the pages are not here yet. Until you see a page like this.
The first page, primary use page?
Mm-hmm. Primary use table. Yep, that one. Passing it out to everyone. And so this is an example of, and we have one of these already in our current zoning ordinance. And so it's a key of sorts that kind of quickly tells the public what's a permitted or principal use versus what's maybe a special land use or what's just simply not permitted at all. And, um, I just wanted to use a couple of pages as an example. So if we're looking, the way this is set up, um, it is divided into our different districts, whether it be residential, mixed use, business, uh, T C D or town center, industrial, or our parks, and our environmental. Then you have our residential uses and our household living. And so, for example, uh, if we want accessory dwelling units, are they permitted in R one, R two, M R D one, M R D two, right? But then not permitted in business districts, um, or the T C D. Other examples of middle housing include now allowing for duplexes, which was not in our previous ordinance before. So if we allow duplexes, do we allow them conditionally in our single household area, but maybe permit them by right in our, like I said, medium to high-density residential or a mixed-use residential? These are things to consider while we're going through this table.
Commissioner Williams, I was gonna say, either you or Mr. Daddell can answer. Um, this tool, right now you're talking about for housing, but this is something the Simmer Planning Department also utilizes for business applicants in their pre-application of where, where not their businesses can be, um, placed as well, right?
That's correct.
Alright.
And so, exactly, so if a developer was to come in and submit an application for their business and they would refer to this and say, okay, this, I can either do this, or I can't, or I can do it, but I would have to submit for a conditional or special land use in order to do it. Um, like I said, it's a long document, so I'm not going to drag everyone line by line. But some other notable options include like group living. So we have adult daycare, we have adult foster cares, we have boarding houses, we have transitional or emergency shelters. So do we say perhaps like the adult daycares could be permitted in a mixed-use district, but not anywhere else? So.
And adult daycares are those different from the A F C homes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
There are different, like, Michigan, um, regulations between, and then depending on how many are in each home as well. Uh, and so, and I know we have some that exist already. And so, you know, it is up to the city as to whether or not we want to allow any more or not. So something to think about, any feedback about that?
I was just asking because I know it's been a persistent conversation, not only in our community, but even at the state level with adult foster care homes, but versus the adult daycare homes, and how that's regulated by the state, and in some communities like ours, they're overran. I'm sorry, the cities overran with them, and they sometimes drain a lot of resources because the owners or the employees do not fulfill the duties to the level that they should.
Right. And so in, we can also be very specific, if we say we do want to allow it, we could say no more than six residents. Because there are different levels.
Adult.
Adult, yeah.
Well, she says a difference between adult daycare and adult foster care homes. So are those the same, or are these two different ones?
There, I thought there were two different ones. Adult daycare and adult foster are different, yeah.
We already have daycare, adult daycare. That's why I was just, that's why I was asking, because I know the A F C homes, adult foster homes are regulated by the state.
Regulated by the state, yeah, we can't, right, right, right. But.
But we, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
We regulate how many people can be there, that's why, if it's more than six, that's why they need a special land use.
Exactly, exactly.
Well, that's the still state regulations.
Right.
You can only have six in a residential home, anything else has to be commercial, anything over that.
Well, not to like have everybody go keep going back and forth, but I do have a definition in Article Two for each option that lists out the max number you can have, depending on the type of facility. And they are defined differently. Yeah.
That, that's, that's what I was just, that's why I was asking, that's the difference.
Yes.
Okay.
So also, but what you're stating in regards to the zoning, um, but we can regulate how many facilities or homes are in a.
District, yes.
As part of the zoning, correct?
Depends on what you're talking about.
Well, so say for instance, like, my neighborhood, there's one in almost every block.
You're talking about, uh, um.
Adult.
Group home?
Yes.
We can't regulate the number.
Wow.
At all. Can't do, cannot regulate.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Yeah, we have over, what, forty? Forty-two, sixty-two?
I've got a sixty-two.
We cannot limit it. As long as there's six people or less.
Okay. Yeah.
I was just asking about that.
We got no idea.
But, and the reason why, and I, I thank you, your honor, for explaining that, because that's a, that's a big concern for a lot of residents, that we got too many group homes up in here, and so we, so that it's just, we legally, there's nothing as, as a municipality that we can do to discourage that. Okay?
Thank you. Um, and so. Continuing with like childcare and education, of course, you have your daycare centers versus your daycare homes, right? Where would we like those to be, would those be conditional and residential? Um, only allowed in maybe your smaller density business? Um, you know, that's something to think about too, I know we have a few of those around. Um, if you.
Special land use, I think, right now. We had one come before, it's not too long ago.
What, daycares?
Yes, if it was over a certain amount, the state of Michigan requires them to have special land use. That was over in Stowman or something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
I was going to go up so many kids, was it ten?
I think it was seven.
Six, over six.
Six, then they gotta get a special land use.
Some people objected to that, bro.
Not some, a whole.
A whole bunch of folks didn't want that in there.
It came with a petition.
Sure did.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they were serious about that.
I, I think it's safe to say, I mean, don't, you know, hold me to it, but I think it's safe to say that a lot of the residents are looking for diversity. We're, we're, we have a lot of the same type of businesses, and I think we're all looking for diversity. And so. And so, um so if you continue and I I definitely, I'll point out some of the other hot-button ones, um including, you know, allowing for maybe uh financial institutions in our mixed residential and our business or even our town center. Uh of course, like retail and grocery stores, uh permitted by right in all business districts, personal service establishments. Um that could be, you know, massage or beauty or, you know. Um and there are definitions for each. Uh we can, I consolidated the definition for um adult regulated use in our current ordinance. We have a lot of definitions for adult bookstores or adult toy stores or adults. So we reduced that down and right now I don't have it permitted anywhere. Any feedback about that? Do we wanna go to the definition of the adult regulated use?
I mean, the question is, do you want that? We already have them, but.
Yeah.
Um do you want more, do you want, I don't know.
More, so that's why, so I can, I can tell you the definition. Well, you said no, you don't want the definition, okay.
No, no, that she don't want more.
More adult.
Yeah, the right, so.
I want the definition, definitely.
Okay, okay, so I'll, I'll give the definition, especially for our audience, right? So adult regulated use and establishment, including but not limited to adult bookstores, adult novelty stores, adult motion picture theaters, adult live entertainment establishments, adult cabarets and other businesses or commercial enterprises that have their principal purpose, their presentation, display, sale, rental or other dissemination of materials, devices or services distinguished or characterized by an emphasis on matters depicting, describing or relating to specified sexual activities or specified anatomical areas as defined by this ordinance. So in our current ordinance, we we've got them all separated out by the different types, like what is an adult novelty store, what is an adult motion picture theater, what is an adult, you know, bookstore or toy store? This is all consolidated into one definition and right now I don't have it permitted anywhere. So like you said, we currently do have some that exist. But if we're saying we don't want them and, yeah, if we don't want them in the future, I mean, uh and correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think there's anything that requires us to have an adult toy store, right? So if we didn't wanna, if we didn't wanna.
Comes when, if the question came up, the owners of uh, was it Bogarts on Michigan Avenue? They were interested in building a new building. Now, the old building, they put a new sign up, whatever, they tried to make it a little better, but it's not impressive, let's just say that. Um so if they wanted to build a new building, let's say they wanted to close the old one down and build a new one on the same spot, would we allow that if we do not allow it at all? Cause right now their grandfather in, but if they shut the current one down, that means it's over.
That's right, it was their father clause.
No, we, we just. Uh? I'm sorry, what?
Listen, they can't hear us.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry, you can't hear us? We were just talking about whether, if we're not allowing any type of adult use, that means the strip clubs. We have three strip clubs in the city. So if one of them, like Bogarts was interested in building a new building to try to compete with the one across the street, what's the name, Flight Club?
Flight Club.
That's more upscale, you know, nice building or whatever. Um but if we do not allow them at all in the new zoning, then they won't be allowed to do that. So they are stuck with the ugly little building they have and we're stuck with that as long as they wanna keep it open because their grandfather in. Or would we want to allow them to make it look better? Not increasing the number, I'm just throwing it out for, I don't care, but I don't go in there. But um do we, do we wanna, cause we wanna make Michigan Avenue look better. Uh and and that's in the entertainment district, which we, it's an overlay district between Middle Belt and Henry Rough, where we wanna attract other type of businesses, uh like uh where the old driving range is, it's fourteen acres right there. There's property on the other side of Bogarts, all the Henry Rough, there's vacant property right there and then across the street also. Old two-story apartment building needs to be tore down and there's property next to that. I would like to see that with strip malls, with bars, restaurants and other types of businesses. And that, I'm sorry.
Is there a way uh for you to deny uh building permits to like kinda long-term flush them off?
Well, we would just have to say they're not allowed. Now, if you're already open, your grandfather in, you can stay open as long as you stay open.
What I mean, building permits, like if they're doing uh rehabilitation to the building and, you know what I mean, going to the city, is that, is is it possible to deny?
No, you can't do that, 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 you'd be discriminating against them at that point.
What about resale? Can we, because you have to, you have to get property use approved by a developer in zoning, right? If 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 I'm buying it from you, I have to do that, but if there's no zoning for it, now I can't get that zoning. So. I would probably, we should probably put some further stats, further stats.
If you buy it from me and buy my company, if it's in an LLC and you buy the entire LLC, you're still grandfather in. If you buy and try to change the ownership, you got a problem, you know? You know, it's not allowed. So I'm just throwing it out there so we can think about it uh and decide how we wanna handle it.
But I noticed that Bogart had expanded their parking lot.
They did.
What I did to you, you still would do that.
If they're spot, if they, if you expand concrete at this point in Wayne County, you almost have to create a stormwater basin. Because any more concrete, you gotta have somewhere for the water to go. Now, I'm not sure, I wasn't paying attention to that development, that's, that happened a few years ago. Um but I know they did increase their parking lot.
Yeah, and and they're using it as parking space.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So is there any way that we can go in there and make them clean it up? Clean that parking space up, make it walk, go, go, go to the city?
If it, if it's blight, if it's considered blight. You know, the code enforcement officers can certainly issue a ticket. Um but you know, I actually haven't been paying attention, what what kinda stuff is in the parking lot? I kinda drive by, I'm not really focused on.
Let's uh finish this and then we can get to that dog that public. A question of it, so we don't get off track.
Okay.
No problem.
And so, um that's, like I said, another hot button that I want commissioners and the, and residents to consider. Um you know, as we update this ordinance, if there are certain things that we're like, well, once they found her or once they're closed, we, they can't come back or to your point, uh if we want them to at least be able to rehab the building, then do we update that? I know I got a lot of feedback that was like, we don't want it anymore. And then someone asked me about motels, they were like, we don't want those anymore either. So, um but if we don't allow motels in the future, uh then I guess when that fall under the same concern, like if they said they were gonna rehab it or or dress it up, we wouldn't, they wouldn't be allowed to do so?
Well, adding the, like, you know, changing the current structure probably would not be something that would have to go through, but like he said, they want to just demolish.
Oh, they wanna, I didn't hear that part, I thought you said they just wanted, they wanted demolish.
They wanna take the old building down and and start and and and.
For Bogarts, gotcha. Okay, so then, yeah, do we want them back, I guess?
Is there a clause that would, that could be written?
Yeah.
That would give them the ability?
Well, we can, I mean, I just threw it out there, is that what we want to do? If you have a existing business, do we wanna give them that, right? If they wanted to make their business, build a new building to make it look better, are we gonna allow them to do it?
I don't think.
It's a non-conforming use, it's not mistaken the way the ordinance is currently written. They can't ask the ZBA.
To appeal, yeah.
They can appeal to the ZBA.
But they can upgrade their building anytime, as long as they don't close down.
No, if it's, if it's a non-conforming use, they can't. You can't expand and improve upon the the property.
Can't expand the footprint, but you can still upgrade the building.
No, I don't believe so.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
You can't, you just can't.
His aesthetics.
You couldn't, you couldn't add an addition, you couldn't add a one square foot. But you could take the facade on outside of the building, make it something new, you could put it up, you could put a new sign.
I'll confirm that, but I don't, I don't think you can.
You can't stop, that's, they got property rights, you can't stop.
Can't stop them from improving the building.
They can't expand it though, they can't change the footprint.
They can't, they, that's definitely for sure.
Okay, something to look into, yeah, you can continue.
That's what I always. Um and so, uh we will, we were moving through adult regulated use. Uh then, some, yeah, we have bars, taverns, uh or some of the other, like I know, hot button use categories. Uh so and then of course, we know, right now we updated the ordinance so that we're maxed out at four, I know we have eight, but.
For what?
For marijuana or retail, marijuana and retail, right?
Considered adult.
Yeah, and that's, and that's also considered adult regulated use. So um at least, I know we've updated that too, even though we have eight, if anyone closes, they won't be allowed to re- to reopen. And we maxed out four. They couldn't replace them, yeah.
We have eight adult use licenses for marijuana, we reduced that to four. Right now we have nine retail marijuana stores open. So as they close, new ones can't reopen.
Oh, I forgot about the jazz bar. Yes.
Maximum is four now, so if five of them closed, then we'd be maxed out at four.
And so, um we also have added food trucks to the ordinance, something that wasn't currently in there. And even uh food truck like parks or, you know, and even though they're technically a temporary, you know, use category, you know, we would still want to be involved, I think, in the permitting of if there's an event or something and, you know, we had a few food trucks came together, what would that look like? Where would they be allowed to go, right? How many will be considered the max? But they've been added, and if I had to give you an example of where they've been added to, um you have your, your medium to high-density business districts, so like your B2 and your B3, um or even your Town Center District. Uh if we're having an event in Town Center, like say we're, we have a cultural community event, something at the amphitheater and we want food trucks to come through, you know, we can, we can permit them there, but I do have them conditional in the TCD.
We're actually, we're looking to, we're, we're hoping to build an amphitheater next to where the old city hall is and a farmer's market where the old city hall is. And the, the, the idea was to have a food truck court there, a U-shape with uh outlets so they can plug right in and do whatever they need to do. I didn't, I wasn't thinking a limit, but I mean, obviously the space, it'll be limited how many we can fit there. But um that, that's part of the plan for having a vibrant downtown area. Instead of waiting for somebody to open a brick and mortar restaurant, which is difficult to do these days, we could have different food trucks, every event we have, any day during the week, they may come at lunchtime and in the summer and people go out, buy their food, sit outside, eat, um you know. So that's what the vision was, to have some, something to do downtown, walkable, um to have food trucks, definitely permitted. I just didn't think about what number we should limit, if we should limit it out there.
I think it may depend on where they go, right? If we feel like it's a limited space here, we can max it out there, but if we have more space somewhere else, we can.
We gotta think, where should we allow them, like, should we allow them in gas stations? Some gas stations don't have a lot of space, you know, where it might be a little dangerous if you're out ordering food and people rolling in and out. Some gas stations have bigger parking lots, maybe it works, cause I see all other cities, they're sitting in gas stations, they're sitting in home vehicles. Um where do we not want to see them, I guess, is, is, we don't want them at the motels.
Right.
But we don't necessarily want them all.
Are they allowed in parks?
Parks?
I would like to think so.
We don't have anything on the books right now, so.
Yeah, we don't, but we could allow them in parks.
And I know we don't really want them all blocking up in residential neighborhoods either.
No.
Um because then they setting up shopping, you have all this traffic coming in and out and people just parking wherever, especially on our sides of the streets where it says no parking. And that causes, you know, conflicts in neighborhoods, especially with the flow of traffic and when emergency vehicles gotta get down that way. So.
They can't park, they, they can drive, like.
Right, right.
Drive, they can't park.
Something to ask this body and then then to just consider is then, do we wanna make it all conditional, but then would that put more, you know, work or energy into someone being able to do it, you know?
We wanna streamline the process, I don't wanna have to come for a planned commission.
Yeah, just have food, yeah, me neither.
She gonna go and allow me spaces, you go get your permit and you go.
Yes, I agree with that, okay. So we can continue, so before we move out of this section, I also just wanted to bring to your guys' attention when the Article Three zoning district and maps start, if you go section by section, it gives you the intent of each one. It also has your permitted uses and your conditional land uses. And you guys can make your notes as you proceed through the pages about whether or not you feel like something should or shouldn't be uh a permitted use or by right or whether or not it should be conditional or land use. It also has dimensional standards, what's prohibited, form standards, and then there's placeholders for future um diagrams that will be included as a part. And so, for example, you know, if you started with R1 single household residential, just to recap for the audience, it's traditional neighborhoods with modest density increases. We wanna support home ownership, walkability, gentle missing, uh missing middle housing such as the ADUs or the accessory dwelling units. So it's about keeping the character of the neighborhood where the single family or a single household, you know, homes are, but like I said, doing some gentle infill with some of the parcels or or land or lots that may be empty or someone being able to use their, their existing lot to maybe add a structure um for additional living. Um and so one side you have your permissible permitted use, your other side your land, your special land use, and then uh as I mentioned, dimensional standards. Some of the things that may be prohibited are like live-work units. So live-work units could be something that's part of your mixed residential. Um but maybe, you know, you don't want, you, you may love your neighbor and they may have a great accounting business, but you may not want people coming next door that that are just, you know, using the business and they have a lot of traffic and so then preventing that or prohibiting that in a residential district, but having like the live-work option, like I said, in a more like downtown center, you know, mixed residential use and not in a single household use, am I making sense? Yeah, and so you can go through each one, um and please make your notes about permitted uses. As I mentioned, some of the other highlights include allowing duplexes, which is not something that we allowed for before. Um live-work is an option, multiplexes are like your quadruplexes, uh row homes, townhouses, um your mixed-use buildings, uh and so make your notes, I'll be looking forward to getting your feedback about how you guys feel about each of the districts. If I had to go to some of the business districts, am I still on, is it, did it go somewhere?
There you go.
There we go. Um oh, now I'm going backwards. So we're in Article Five, so you have in your Article Three, all of your, you know, dimensional standards and like I said, you'll have, you'll have your diagrams to kinda support what those mean. And then you have your, your use, your permitted use table. You go to Article Five, which, oh, I guess the, the page was on the other side. This is where we establish the dimensional placement and site design standards to implement the city's master plan and zoning plan. And we wanna ensure that development is predictable, compatible and consistent with community goals. Um so standards apply to all zoning districts unless more specified standards are provided um or like we use an overlay, like the tiny home overlay or the anti-displacement or the PUD or planning or development. Um we also include like rules of measurement, like your height, your lot width, your build-to zones, a lot of technical language. Um your facade transparency, for example, if we're in a walkable downtown district, uh do we wanna be able to see completely in? Or would they be allowed to have some type of mirroring or darkening on the, on the windows? Those are things to think about. And so, um of course, when it comes to design standards, we wanna make sure that the shop fronts, for examples, or the porches or stoops fit, cause if we do do mixed, well, right now we have it where if you are residential and mixed-use retail space, it has to be above ground floor. So retail will be ground floor space and anything where people are living, it would have to be the next floor up. And so, nothing that's on ground floor as far as entry is concerned. Um parking moves to the side or the rear, um green infrastructure and sustainability. We do have updates that include like EV readiness, so electric vehicles. Mostly in like the TCD um or business districts. Uh civic spaces, so larger developments must include like plazas or green or art spaces. We can require these things um so that, you know, like I said, it benefits not just the developer, but it benefits our community too. Um and then of course, you know, having clearer visual rules reduces guesswork. So um as I mentioned earlier, rather than just saying this is how we want it to be used or what's restricted or prohibited as far as the land, um how do we want it to look? How do we want it to be designed? And we can put those requirements in there as well. Do we want it to be brick? Do we want it to be something, you know, so mixed use, mixed materials, whatever that. And we can put those requirements in there as well. Do we want it to be brick? Do we want it to be something, you know, so mixed use, mixed materials, whatever that looks like. And so um if you guys get a moment, like so there are cross, cross references to some of the, the uh diagrams, um and I'm actually gonna go in a moment into like the summary table of changes. But to finish off, in Articles Five through Seven, so right now, as updated, the updated version of the ordinance has seven articles, and Five through Seven um also include uh administration and enforcement. Um so we're trying to make the rules more predictable, uh you know, when it comes to faster permits, when it comes to smaller projects, uh simplifying the process with flow charts, um checklist for rezoning and site plans. Something that I know this body really likes and it has been recommended um by uh, there's a pattern book for housing that already has like predetermined uh plans for like duplexes and homes. If we have those on file, um rather than someone having to create it themselves, they can just say, hey, we want, yeah, it's kind of like a, a subdivision, right? Where when they're building the subdivision, they have like House A, B, C, D, and people are like, oh, I like House A for whatever reason, and they decide to choose that over maybe House C because of the different bedrooms or the different, you know, looks of it. So it'll be something similar to that, and then it can reduce how long it takes for something to get developed, because they didn't actually have to create it, they could just pick something that was already pre-approved by the city and. Yes, and just go with it. And so um I know that code enforcement has been a hot button or hot topic for a lot of us, so we wanna make sure that, like I said, we have clear development procedures. Um we're also um streamlined and hopefully what can be considered for administrative approval versus something that has to go before a voting body. So right now, we got a lot of special land use things that have to come before the planning commission, for example. Can we minimize how many things actually need a special land use? And depending on how big or small the project is, can it just be something that P C D or planning and community development can just say yes to? Mind you, these will be predetermined criteria. It won't be something that the public won't be fully aware of, or we won't be fully aware of. But if we say, yes, this is how we, that's okay, then P C D can just approve it. They don't need to get a planning commission or a city council involved, but then, of course, for some of those larger projects, um perhaps, you know, we need to at least at minimum go before the planning commission, and then something like a planned unit of development, which will maybe, you know, have like twenty-five plus units, for example, and take up a, a large piece of land, will have to maybe go through all three, right? Admin, planning commission, and city council. So as just, it should be in here. Am I, am I missing some pages, maybe?
The decision-making role?
Yep, the decision-making, oh, yay. You see it. It's so that is an example of, so it looks like this right here. We have like a, you know, a chart that says who gets to decide versus, you know, what gets recommended, and then, of course, you have the Z B A, the zoning board of pills, uh who, when it comes to like a variance, for example, or maybe an interpretation, maybe the developer and us are not on the same page about certain setbacks or what they're allowed to do, and they need to come before a body so that they can make a ruling or determination. Then they would go before the Z B A to do that. So I also encourage everybody to look over this table. If you feel like anything needs to be added or changed, please, I welcome your feedback.
At this time or in the coming days? At this time or in the coming days?
At this time or in the coming days.
Commissioners, do you have anything at this time?
We're almost done, y'all. It's a lot, but in the interest of transparency and seeing where we're going, like where we're coming from to where we're going, is, you know, uh it's not the most exciting stuff, I know, but we gotta talk about it. I, I do too. But, you know, that's just me. Does everybody in the audience have this, right? So I'm hoping that this makes it easier for everyone to kind of understand what the summary of zoning updates have been. It's probably the very, very last. So we'll start with the structure and organization. So right now, traditional format with the current ordinance, you know, limited cross references. If you're looking at one part of it, it doesn't necessarily tell you, go look at this definition or go look at this diagram. If we include more of that, it makes it easier to read and follow, and makes it easier for people to understand what the expectations are. Um so the updated draft um includes a modern, a T O C table of contents uh with Articles One through Seven, includes district sheets and use tables, site standards, development procedures, enforcement, rules of measurement with diagrams. And so right now, as I mentioned, um this is, what we see here is formatted literally just for readability and, and feedback. It's not what the final document is gonna look like. The final document is gonna be a lot more colorful, with a lot more imagery, this, but right now, we need to get through kind of like the meat and potatoes of it all, and then we'll add those things later. So I do wanna put that out there. Um so the key impact for updating this particular piece of it improves clarity, usability, and legal defensibility. And of course, if anybody has any feedback or notes they wanna add, I have a section right here to keep it all um organized. We updated the definitions and measurements, so um we had limited uh or scattered terms. Uh we either consolidate, consolidated them or took them out altogether, because they weren't necessarily relevant to our city anymore. Um so hopefully, it's a comprehensive A through se- uh A through Z definitions plus rules of measurement section. Um this is where they talk, we talk about the lot, the height, uh the transparency, the frontage. For example, requirements, if something is being developed in, in, in R one or R two next to a mixed residential or a mixed residential is being built, and say that particular building is only limited to like four stories, I'm just, I'm throwing it out there. If it abuts against like a single household district, they will be required to transition down. So it's not these like drastic changes between neighborhoods when it comes to the different heights of buildings. Am I making sense?
That's similar to over there uh on Williams and Andover, I believe, where they brought, uh Pastor Hattan was trying to have a, a development over there, and those houses were too big for the footprint, and they were required to transition down, but that didn't happen because that particular company, that's not what they were in the business to do.
Do, got you, yeah. So we're trying to be intentional about that. Yes, we want the updates to our community and wanna see these buildings, but you know, we want it to also make sense as you flow through, and we don't want something going. Maybe not necessarily that, I don't know, y'all tell me. Or a tiny home, but if it's a mixed, like I said, if it's a mixed residential uh district that has a potential for retail on the bottom floor and living space above, um but it's a budding like a R one district with mostly single households, maybe we, we don't want it to be four stories high. Maybe if it's budding, it has to transition down to two, two and a half, you know what I mean? So that, that's what we're saying, so that, that it kind of looks more appealing to the eye. Um but y'all can tell me how y'all feel about mega mansions next to it. More symmetrical, like I said, being more intentional about design. What is that, there, y'all? Um, oh my god, she just gave me a moment. Area ratio, what's, what's my F right now?
Just circle it.
It'll come to watch, it's gonna, it's gonna pop in my brain in two seconds. Zoning districts, so fewer broader districts, mostly use-based standards. Um so we refi- uh uh refine the districts, and like I said, R one, R two, M R D one, M R D two, B one through B three, T C D, um M one and M two are industrial, and then we have our parks and environmental open spaces plus our overlays, so adding more flexibility um in aligning zoning with master plan land use designations.
Real quick question, when you said B one through B three, I know we talked about something with B two before, what was in there? Refining that, did, did B two get expanded upon, or it ju- it just got a more of a, more de- definition?
We gave it more definition, we gave it more intent, um right? And then the types of permitted uses versus like the conditional, um cause like I said, it, it's really supposed to be like your low density versus your medium and your high. Um so giving it more character definition, and uh right now, I don't know how long we're gonna have the moratorium on like auto repair or things like that, but trying to allow for the different types of businesses that we want. Um so really just adding more language to be clearer about what it is that we want. Am I making sense, hopefully? Um residential standards, so um ADUs, duplexes, townhomes, multiplexes, tiny homes, detailed dimensional standards in each district. I did refer to the M M L, um Michigan Municipality League uh for the pattern home book, um to get a lot of those definition standards. Um everything from where the driveways could be located to the garages to how far out a stoop or a porch can go, um how big the lot needs to be in order to accommodate a duplex, things like that. Um use regulations, so updated the use, the, the table. Um and as you know, permitted versus conditional versus prohibited, which is left blank. And hopefully, um this allows it to be more transparent and predictable. If we go to business and town center on the next page, so um in our current ordinance, and that kind of goes into the question you just asked me, um we allow for a lot of auto-oriented uses. Um and so right now, it's prohibiting fueling stations or auto sales or repair, or at least making them more conditional. Like I said, right now, we at least have a moratorium on the repair part of it. Um and then allowing, maybe we don't, or maybe we do, you guys tell me, do we want drive-through? And drive-through facilities don't have to just be fast food restaurants, they can be like pharmacies, or you know what I mean? They could be other things, banks or credit unions. So we can think about, when it comes to drive-through facilities, which ones we do and don't want there. Um something to think about, but the whole purpose is we wanna emphasize walkability and sh- you know, shop fronts and mixed use and have, you know, where people can easily access things. Certain businesses kind of make that difficult. Um and then uh the key impact is it re- reinforces our downtown revitalization and the main street character, and that's something that we wanna accomplish as a part of our master plan. Um site and form standards, so we don't really have a lot of that in our current ordinance. Um so, you know, like I said, building more setbacks or build-to-zones, transparency, frontage types. Like I said, what do we want it to look like? Uh there's a lot of cities are considering parking reform um when it comes to their zoning ordinance, so do we even wanna have a minimum when it comes to the required parking? Or do we wanna eliminate it altogether? That's something to think about. There's a lot of cities who are getting rid of, like, if you had a certain um de- development, depending on how big the development was, it would be required that they would have to have a certain amount of parking to go with it. But then they've been finding that that makes it really difficult to strike deals. Um or it, they, it might even impact price, because of course, parking still requires maintenance. So then if a developer is like, well, at first I was only gonna charge people this price, but now that I'm required to have parking, it might make it go up a little bit, because they're factoring in the, the maintenance of it all. So then do we even want parking minimums?
I see what you're saying, uh because I always have a problem with going downtown, even as a utility worker. It's like, okay, where do I park at? I'm not here to purchase a service, I'm here to provide one. I used to be able to park in alleys, and then they took all of that away. You couldn't get down there, so now, well, I worked in Chicago one time, I had to pay ten dollars to park and walk five blocks with all my tools to the condo. And I was like, this, it sucks, you know, the homeowners have the parking structures. But uh as you see, in some places, we end up granting waivers for them to have bikes and stuff, but I was talking to a gentleman yesterday who was talking about, he bought this scooter, he could throw in the back of his truck, so he could park wherever and then hop on a scooter ride to the place. So things like that are coming about, so I see what you're saying with the minimum site design controls for parking minimum citywide.
So yeah, is it, you know, do we want a minimum for our T C D or not? Or if we do have a planned unit development, do we wanna say, hey, no, you guys have to have, if you're gonna have this many units or this, you know, per square footage, you have to have at least this many spots for people to park. Or public parking, but public parking is, what I, what I hear through grapevine from other cities, like even Wayne is tearing down.
Went away from charging people in their public parking spaces, but now, in, well, at least in West Dearborn, they had a machinery back in the structures to begin charging parking, for parking again. So I don't know, I don't know what happened there, I didn't look into it, but. You can't park in some of those storefronts, though, that are right there. It lets you go in those structures, and there's really no major on-street parking.
I know we've talked about doing like a, a diet, a road diet for Michigan Ave, but say for kicks and giggles, we didn't necessarily reduce it, but allowed for some of that parking to happen, use some of the, the lane space for people to park. On-street parking? Is that something we wanna consider? Or do we feel like it'd kind of?
Once that gets there, because we already kind of sort of had that conversation with lowering the speed limit. But uh the Department of Transportation and the state police are ones that vote on that, and right now, they're a definite no. They wanted to increase the speed on Michigan Avenue in Exeter. Yes, they wanted to increase it. Because they did whatever measurements from Beach Daily all the way down to Henry Rough, how long it was taking cars to get from point A to point B. One entity, I forget which side was like, oh, let's increase it to like forty-five or fifty. And the other entity said, no, but they both have to be unanimous in it for it to pass, so it didn't happen. But us, we're looking at development downtown, and that's the only way that they would have an incentive as to say, okay, we're going to lower it. Kind of like when you get to Wayne, it goes to thirty-five to twenty-five before it jumps back up to forty. I'm the same thing when you're going into Dearborn.
Well, we do actually have a lot of our existing buildings with behind the street parking or behind the building parking.
Yeah, right now, yeah.
Yeah, right there in that spot, yeah.
We can revisit.
We can revisit. Uh so uh overlays, we currently have none in the current ordinance. Um and so, as I mentioned before, we added anti-displacement, planned unit development, and tiny homes. Yeah, it doesn't say it in the ordinance.
So like if I was to get it permitted, I couldn't do it, because. Well, depending on the, the use, what you, what you're providing, what you're offering.
Back in my brain. Like, I be having moments, you know. Yeah, but I didn't remember reading, it was an entertainment overlay in our current ordinance. Plan, okay. Okay.
Yeah, I just can't remember. I, I know we talked about it in depth. There was visuals and everything, I think even with using G I S. Um but I, I just.
It could have been the master plan process, the first, last time we did it. More than likely, what happens is, if, if someone did come in and wanted to do something, you would reference it in the master plan. Well, this is what the master plan says, this, this from, from here to Henry Rough would be our entertainment district. But, but it doesn't say it in the ordinance itself, as this is a. Cause all those uses are allowed anyway, so I'm not, it's a B three.
Yeah, it's in the B three. So I can, you know, we can flesh out the language of the entertainment overlay more, if you like.
Rather be safe than sorry, right?
Yeah. Um so then, uh like I said, procedures, um updated that. Uh like mentioned earlier, maybe having site plan tiers, what can admin approve versus what's required to become, you know, before a voting body. Um you know, whether it be text amendments or variances, uh administration and enforcement, you know. Uh I, I know that we've talked about updating the procedures and. Updating the procedures and uh, hopefully kind of doing it where we're more proactive with our code enforcement. And getting the community on the same page about expectations, rather than being very reactive. Um, and so uh, fleshing those out, and then one of the last um, pages is just kind of like examples of updating some of the figures. Uh, if you look at the current ordinance, uh, some of them, they're rather blurry. Um, but uh, this kind of gives you an example of some of the figures that will be included, um, like for example, what's considered a basement versus a story. Um, when it comes to corner lots. Uh, what are the, you know, setbacks that are required for those? Uh, building height, there are different types of roofs, for example, so everything, you know, where are you measuring from? When it comes from the ground to the the height of the roof, on a flat roof, it would be from here to here. From, you know, a gable roof, it'll be, you know, from the eve or the average height in between the ridge and the eve. Like, so you can see where the arrows are kind of showing you. And then the ordinance, it does break down the measurements. Um, but sometimes it's just helpful to have a a diagram or a figure that kind of um, translate what you're reading into a visual. Uh, guide so that you're clearer about what we mean, cause if you read it, even when I read it, and it's just like, oh, your your average, the average height between this and this and that. Like, you're like, okay, wait, so that's that's where some of these diagrams are as examples coming. But future diagrams will also include um, some of the form base code I was mentioning too. Um, and even some of like the examples of what we made, the duplexes and some of the missing metal housing. It would also include some references to that and like community character and having a a visual for the different zoning districts, et cetera. Um, any um, questions or feedback? I can wait till the public hearing part to share some of the other stuff from the survey.
Absolutely.
But um.
Commissioners at this time, um, thank you Commissioner Williams for this presentation and in-depth information. Commissioners at this time, do you have any questions for Commissioner Williams? Alrighty, we're gonna move down to item number five, which is the first hearing of the public. This is for items not scheduled for a public hearing, which tonight, we don't have any public hearings, but on the agenda. So that uh, presentation was on the agenda, and then the uh, we just have some miscellaneous items, we're just talking about the planning Michigan twenty twenty-five conference. Um, so those are the two items on the agenda, so at this time, we're opening it up to the public, please approach the podium. And state your first and last name for the record and address this body.
How you guys doing? My name is Julian Hall. I'm a contractor, I'm also on a flooring and tile company. Um, so I had a plethora of questions.
Regarding items that are on the agenda, right?
Yes.
Okay, go right ahead.
A hundred percent, so so I don't know if actually if this one is off track, but are there any uh, districts up under the uh, NEZ? Which is uh, neighborhood, um, enterprise zone, that year?
Annapolis Point is uh, they got approved for NEZ.
Oh, sure.
They had a groundbreaking this summer, um, that was with Gadzuski Homes is the developer. And Pastor Hearn.
That's who 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 got it passed, or?
They were, well, they presented it to us because the development they wanted to do, it had to be voted on by city council. And public hearings and all of that, and so we went through all of those motions, so that area over there where they're doing that development, the NEZ is in effect there.
So, and as the, in uh, Annapolis Point, what is the uh, procedure to um, to push through, to make it um, NEZ?
It's a long procedure, that's with the state of Michigan.
Okay.
It was a state and federal government, right?
Yeah.
Uh, another question is, uh, what's the zoning for uh, tiny homes? Uh, because, yeah.
Currently, we don't have one.
No, current, so when is that, because I I I saw that it was in um, hopefully the procedure, when would that be passed potentially?
We're hoping to get this passed by the end of the year. So, yeah.
So then what are the, what are the current minimum um, footage requirements on for building um, a residential lot right now?
Can tell you off the top of my head, but uh, our zoning ordinance is online.
The zone is online, yeah. Where would I find, cause I I I've been looking for the.
Planning um, and development.
Do you have?
If you go to website, it takes you to external link.
It's gonna say zoning ordinance.
Zoning ordinance, yeah, because to go, I mean, as you all reiterated throughout the meeting. The biggest thing I believe in Inkster, because it's family oriented, is really just getting lower income housing, you know what I mean, um? And so me and a few developers has been trying to put up a business plan together, something similar to like a community of like the modular based homes. Or the tiny home base with um, and that's gonna lead me to my next question, with a lot more highlighting and potentially even fake grass. And this uh, uh, made up area where that it it feels more uplifted and and youthful. Um, so the next question would be um, in regards to the lighting, hold on, I'll put it in here. Oh yeah, are there any uh, any implementations in any districts for uniform street lightings? And if so, is that like, do you have a list of the districts that that are?
We have uniform street lights.
Yeah, but they. I mean, as you know, like when you're driving through Inkster, you will have like, um, like by Saigon or by like, it's it's different, it's different. Um, district, I can't name barbarity, but um, but the ones that don't have any street lightings are, like, is there plans and implementations to?
I don't, I don't know any sections that don't have streetlights. Uh, Inkster Housing owns the uh, the Parkside, Lamont, Denby. So they may be different, cause that's their property, but the city does, we did all the streetlights, so.
Okay.
They're all, they're all the same, LED on Michigan Avenue, remember we replaced those?
We did the upgrades, yeah, we're we're in the process of upgrading.
So let's say, let's say if there is an area um, looking to develop, um, what would be the the proper steps of adding, you know, adding a uniform streetlights?
That'd be part of development, so when you create your site plan, when you meet with the city, you'll meet with a pre-development meeting. They'll lay out what you need to turn into the city, uh, what's required. And then when you do your site plan and development plan, you'll show, okay, I wanna have eight lights on these streets, you need the infrastructure here, you'll lay all that out. Um, but it's a pretty exhaustive process for a development. Um, I don't know if you've ever done it, but it's, you start with going to see Mr. Dowdell. Um, and then he can lay out the whole process for you, if if you're trying to uh, get started with that.
Yeah, I definitely speak to you.
What happens is, we have what's called a pre-development meeting, like the mayor said. Um, I sit in it, the DPS sits in it, the building department sits in it, anybody else that that uh, attains to the information. We break it down from what the zoning is, what the setbacks are, things of that nature. DPS can tell you where the where the the water wastewater lines are, the building department lets you know what cu- current code ordinance that they're following, things of that nature.
Okay, and i- i- is it best to have, is it best to have an official business, uh, um, uh, business redevelopment plan? Before speaking to you, or will, for the pre-development?
Just be fact-finding.
Okay, cool.
If you're trying to find some some information, that's what, you know, you set up a um, meeting with us, we will meet with you. Uh, it's recorded, so when it's all said and done, we will then uh, give you that recording. So in case it was something that was said, you know, in the the midst of the conversation, that you can go back and listen to and things of that nature.
Okay, awesome, I appreciate it. All right, and that's all for the questions.
I appreciate you guys, just make sure you uh, leave your contact information with Mr. Dowdell or and vice versa, that way you can set that up. And whatever information you're looking for on the website, perhaps it can be, you know, emailed to you if you can't locate it.
For sure, I mean, I I plan on ma- making it habitually to come out here, you know, um, just to get acclimated and know really the proper. Because I wanna turn the, like an idea into something official on paper, you know, cause anybody can talk about building homes and building, community building. But, you know, it's not gonna make sense until, you know, I'm talking to guys like yourself.
Absolutely, thank you. Is there anyone else from the general public at this time that wishes to speak? Great.
Uh, good afternoon, I'm Rob Johnson. I'm going from a builder to developer, I do live here in the city of Inkster. Um, I've worked with all of the last four administrations, um, as I'm the master builder for Habitat for Humanity. But I'm going out and striking on my own, and one of the things that I've been seeing as I'm striking out is that. The either we're incentivized as builders and developers to build large use capacity for a parcity, for a parcel. Or not build at all. And so one of the things that I wanna encourage us to do as we're looking at our rezoning. Is to make sure that we have the new developer and the mid-sized developer kind of in mind like myself. And then it's, the reality is, is that I would probably be the person who would do a development in the city of Inkster. Because I have the at-will ability to build, I have the at, the years to do the build. But then the development would require me based on current zoning, that I would never be able to do it, so I'm caught in a zone, I would just call it a void. It's kind of like this void where you just have the abilities, but it's too big. The the zoning that you have in place now, it's too big. So if you can zone it down, and I just give some examples so you can kind of understand what I'm saying. So for instance, in our mixed use, we have that we're we're doing what's called stackables. So we're doing the the store first, and then the unit, then the unit, then the unit. Well, for me, that means that I have to create parking, if I have to create parking, that means my per square foot. Build is gonna be more because my my storm basin is gonna have to be able to catch more more runoff. Well, if you do mixed use where there's townhomes and other styles of condos that are. Um, for, I mean, uh, at grade, then it allows me to come in and then I can now give a, I can give, I can give cost to our. Our constituents of the city that are comparable to other costs in other cities without me having to raise the price. And so when you loo- look at the use case analysis on those type of bills versus the mixed use. And so like for instance, if you were gonna do a MR MR one, MR MR two. The mixed use, like for instance, on Carlisle, on Harrison Street. Those will be great ideas or great areas to see those type of properties be used for. And I know that some of the, we wanna move some of our residents out of those areas. Because we wanna begin to use those areas, because we want moms to be able to walk their dogs, to go get coffee, to go get. Whatever those other things that we would normally get, but we still wanna be able to live next door to those things. So we don't, we wouldn't normally, like youth push, that we, you know, kind of in. Build up on Michigan Avenue, but if I'm a city gore, because the city has caused the. The uh, traffic to be forty miles per hour, where if you go, or forty-five miles per hour, but if you go to Wayne, they slow you down. Because they're slowing you down, because they want you to utilize that business use in those areas. But now the cities, the state is saying to us, hey, we want you to speed through Inkster, well, what is that saying to us? That's saying that we we don't want the people who are driving past Inkster to use the resources and businesses in Inkster. So as the commission, I would um, I would um, politely ask that you consider, first of all, asking the state. To make sure that they know that we're, like you're proposing to put uh, a a mixed use. But slowing down the mixed use area so that, you know, people are slowing down, so that might mean a bike path, cause they're doing it everywhere else. That might mean the ability to walk across the street slower, that might mean that the ADA accessibility, even though it's still, you know. What's called storefront entry, you still have all of those availabilities, and so now, a person like me can come in. And now a person like me can, and I'm not just speaking for me, I'm speaking for those who are behind me and those individuals who are like me, who are ready to build now. We have the investors, but we can't do a seven hundred and fifty square feet. The competition, I'm not in that realm, I'm in a realm of a hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty per square feet right now of what I do. But, and that's what the banks are saying yes to for me, and so I'm saying, it's the same thing for all of the, you fit that profile. And right now, the people who fit the profile for that hundred and fifty to three hundred square feet, we don't have any zoning that's available for it. So I would encourage you to kind of do inductive thinking, meaning think backwards into making it. Cause of the whole thing that you started off with is that, when we come to a point of being of developer friendly. It's not just that developers who are large, it's friendly for them. Because the other thing is that developers who that are large, when they come in, they are gonna make the pricing and the taxation go up. Because the per square foot is gonna go up for them to build. I encourage that, but I think that if we can kind of make those spots, like I talked about Harrison, Carlisle, there's some. There's some other spaces around the city, but I just think that it's clear that we see those where we can, instead of doing a frontage on the thing. We can turn the the mixed use to the side, and it makes it a a whole lot more credible for for a person like me to now come in. And to gain, instead of to just, you know, me me even. Then, so that was my personal, but then based on what you said, I have some things on what you guys were, some thoughts. Um, and so some things that you could consider, and that is a the. So just going to redevelopment, that's nineteen ninety, so we have to then go to smart. So going to smart means that we add tech, going to tech means that we have parcels that are non-fungibly added. So that we can now put them in like the the blockchain. Um, then we can put it in crypto, and so that piece is gonna be important. Because cities who are advanced and able to make the next steps to the next level, they are already there ten years ago. And so for us to make sure that we are considering these things as we go forward, so that, one. As soon as we make the the master plan, it's already old, and then two. Us having the ability to now move forward for people like us who are right here doing the work. And then have the ability to get the funding for the work, but we can't do it again because of that, and then the other piece is. Oh, so. It's not, it's not what I'm asking for, but it just, I just kind of wanna give another example. So for instance, a land engineer is needed when we go up. So I've gotta go get a land engineer, and I've gotta see if the footing will be able to hold. Whereas when I'm doing at grade, I'm only doing it for fraud zone. And so those two differentials, I mean, it's, it takes in a lot of extra work. Um, right now, building in Southfield and there are water out there, and we don't have that here, which is good. But if we can change the zoning down in MR two and MR, the mixed use one and mixed use two. That would just make, that would just be, I mean, it would give us, I'm I'm available to sit with anybody. On on and have conversation about it in an advanced way, so that we can have advanced thinking outside of any normal meeting. I'm available, I can make myself available, because I own the company. But the other piece is, for me now to come and say that I wanna do this with with this gentleman. The the things that I'm saying, I can't do them now based on the.
Current.
The current setup that you have, and so now I would have to go to him, he has to do the special land use, and now we're talking three to six months. Y- your building's on, your time and season for building is out, then depending on when you guys vote, it puts me in a precarious situation. So, you know, something as simple as having a GIS system that you can scroll over with your mouse. And it gives you the whole impactful plan of that particular parcel, that's what smart cities are doing now. So I just kind of wanna put that in our, in our epiphanic shift, if you were. So that we can actually do those things and then be up to par, so I'm I'm available. And then I I'd like to thank you for all your work with Habitat, the 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 last two mayors after you, before you. We we also did it, well, you were in between, I think, yes, you were, and so thank you all for that, but um. And.
If you wanna leave your your contact information.
Yes, and and just excuse me, cause I had a, I had a list based on your presentation, and I just, I was waiting.
Oh, there you go.
Okay, so when you talk about tax um, increase, so as we know. The mixed use, I'm sorry, the residential that has duplex and fourplex on them. So that having the ability to have a duplex on a partial and then a duplex as an ADU or DDU. To match, as you, I think you called it like an in-law suite, kind of like a connecting and non-connecting. Well, having those, like for a lot of people who was called age in place, in our community specifically. We don't wanna go to the nursing homes, which are closing, and we don't wanna have to go to AFC, which now our parents are forced into. If they can't do adult daycare and or some type of senior living, well, we don't have that in Inkster. So the question is, I would think that you would consider our elderly population in that. We have family members who are now aging out of their ability to use their home by themselves. But if we could do ADUs or DDUs, then we would have the ability for them to now utilize that that zoning and permitting. To upgrade the housing, and then it would cut down on a lot of of. Of, of funding that's needed to actually just take care of our elderly. So I, I thank you for that and thank you for your hard work.
I, uh, just wanted to piggyback real quick. When Mr. Johnson was speaking about, um. The sup, the walkability and ADA compliant portion of it. Uh, myself and Commissioner Williams did attend some walkthroughs with, uh, who was that? McKenna?
It was McKenna.
McKenna for the safer for streets. Uh, safe, safe streets for all. I might be quoting it wrong, but that was a four city grant between Inkster, Westland and, uh.
Garden City.
Garden City and Wayne. Um, for a grant that they were all going out to, to assist with making the communities more walkable. Making sure those street signs, like we went through survey of different street signs that were working, non-working and might not be working because cars hit them.
You guys are doing a good job, honestly.
And, um, we went, me and my, me and the mayor went to a, a presentation at Westland about that. And that's kind of. The funding they got to do this framework to show like, look, all forty cities, you know, need X, Y, and Z. So I just wanted to put that information out there.
So the other thing I was going to ask is, do you have to be on a commission to attend the Kalamazoo trip? Um, I know that, oh, you do. Because I, if you can make special, I would love to. The inside of that meeting because those are some of the things that helps me as a builder. Kind of give the low income housing to people because I can foresee what's coming. And then being able to foresee what's coming, then I can kind of inductively go back and say, if I do this and this, I can meet this standard now. And already had built into those things. So if you consider having outside sources, particularly if they're constituents of the city of Inkster. I, I one would love to have the ability to come to that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, we got one more question.
Uh, one second. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. In regards to the gentleman who just spoke, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Johnson, I am one of those home, of homeowners, business owners who had property on Carlisle and Harrison. Um, where we were on a single floor, as you stated, the storefront was in the front and the residential was in the back. So, uh. I agree with you that that is something that we may need to re-entertain again because we had several storefronts. In that particular Harrison, Carlisle, Harrison, Andover, Harrison and Beach area. And it would make it a lot easier for that type of setting. And, and, and because it, it, it has, it has existed in the past. So I, I think that, that was a good point. And there's probably, like you said, there's a couple of other areas. Like I believe even the Henry Ruff at some point had storefront in the front and, and living in, 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 in a, um.
Speaking before my time.
And, and it was, and, and it was.
Respond to that. It's because as the mayor said, it's hard to put up a restaurant because of the, the basin, storm basin issues. So we have to have the, uh, the allotted amount of parking. And so a person can have a great idea and a great business, but they can't get the structure up. Well, if we, if we minimize the envelope for the size of the store, that minimizes the size of the, the, the parking. And so that's why I was, I'm encouraged, I don't. I'm encouraged to say that we shouldn't have parking regulations as it relates to that because now what it does is it brings. It brings the, the food desert issue, it, it addresses that. It addresses the walkability issue. It addresses high and mass density where you don't actually have to, to, to move a car. You can just walk to the place. And so now you're talking about a bike, a scooter, a wagon, literally. Cause you know, you have to have something to pull it back in. And so my grandmother, she had a little basket. It just folded up, folded down and she can just go and walk. And if it's a fifteen minute walk or less, then it's logical. And so that's the thing that I think that a small city like this would kind of. Be centered on and go back to. So thank you for that point.
Yes, sir. Yes, uh, last question.
Uh, within Inkster Economic Development Center program, are there, uh, targeted industries for like business developments? And employment centers that, uh, Inkster would give tax incentives to?
I know we were, uh, I don't know if you want to take it or jump in.
Oh, we discussed taxes and I don't like it just because we have to raise revenue. The city has to run. Um, but if a business was bringing X number of jobs or some o- other way benefit the city and we felt that it. It would behoove us to give them a tax break. Every business has a tax break. They don't want, no, nobody wants to pay taxes. They want to put that money in their pocket. But it would have to be something that we thought really benefit the city if we're not going to collect tax. Cause we have to service that business. And police, fire, we have to service, provide those services for that business in that space. So I believe personally they should pay some taxes. We have pilot programs, we have. Different things that they can request and then that's up to city council whether they want to do it or not.
Right. And for myself, as I'm endeavoring to, and getting to development, um, like as I'm learning from other people, somebody, uh, Wise told me that, um. The biggest focus is to focus on business development. It's like why you sign, sign me silently, so you focus on living. And so I really ask, I, I guess to kind of simplify that question is more so is Inkster, is, is city itself. Are, are they looking to incentivize certain type of industries of business? Like. For myself as a developer, what businesses can I focus in to bring to Inkster that will be supported by the city basically?
Essentially, businesses we would like to see, which are, which a lot of retail service oriented businesses. We have plenty of marijuana. We have enough strip clubs, I believe. We want restaurants, we want other type of bus, types of businesses. Part of incentive prac- practice is the reason why we're getting certified. When we get certified ready, they'll, that brings additional resources from the county, from the state. So you might want to do a development. Well, the state might chip, chip in three hundred thousand dollars. The county might chip in a hundred fifty on the infrastructure. Once we're certified, we can tap those resources to help make that development happen.
For sure. Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I was going to kind of piggyback and, you know, I know that we've also been in discussion about like career and vocational type tech. Related spaces where, um, people can get certain skills because, you know, uh, college isn't for everyone. But maybe a trader skill, you know, is something that they, they will be more interested in. And so then that's where some of that environmental or open space district thing comes in.
And to piggyback on that, I would, I would really like to see, I don't know if some way somehow, uh, you all as a city and council. Um, can push for, um, like piggybacking, I'm just saying, um, the, the trade and vocational in the inner city. Um, like a different, different section in training centers because I believe that being, it, it being closer and walkable to the youth. You know what I mean? And it's allowing the, uh, the kids and or anybody to gain on trades. Then I think that will add back into the, um, to the economic state of, of the city because as we are getting trades and we are working. You know what I mean? I think that would be a huge thing for the city. Even going along with that, there's a demand, um, the high demand for new trades. You know what I mean? As, as the generations is going, you know, um. But I still, I kind of still didn't get the answer just yet. I think I got to rephrase it. It's more so that. I know you said, uh, you, you all are pushing for, uh, retail centers, but what, what is it that? You know, like, because I know it's phases and developing Inkster for sure, but the focus right now. What is the focus as far as like if you, I guess if I can ask, like as a, a business developer. What is the, are you all trying to promote more activity? Are you all trying to promote more safety or more comfortability? So what, what businesses would you like to see being built, you know, initially in this phase?
Because we want to become more walkable. We want coffee shops. We want other service type businesses. We do, we are talking about a road diet on Michigan Avenue, but that involves M dot, M dot, you know, it's not our street. That's the state's street. So. All of those things are kind of, we already started, uh, the skilled trades thing we brought, that's already.
Oh, straight.
Working towards it.
That's a blessing.
So we're trying, these are big things obviously for a small city to do, but we're all working towards that now. So it's not one particular type of business or two. We already have, uh, certain businesses and we want to see some others. So I think, you know. A lot of communities have businesses, normal, everyday businesses you have in the community. Ice cream shop, you got this, you got that. We don't have some of those things. Um, we used to have a Coney Island, but I guess we had the Marcos. We had what, three restaurants in the city now?
Well, two bar and grills and then D'Amico's and, uh, so Mr. Mr. B's.
If I had two, two things that jumped out at me when I know we've been discussing things is. Uh, businesses that are going to keep people in Inkster for a period of time opposed to. Them just kind of like a being a convenience store or like a gas station where they have. Or a drive-through where they literally have no reason to stay. They just get purchase something and you continue going. So. I know that's been an overarching goal and then like a, a career, a youth career pipeline of sorts. Where we can work with the youth, like I said, and, and get them, um, access to certain training, um, so that. We can either keep our talent here or, you know, get them to come back, right? And track them and get them to come back. So. When I, when, based on your question, when I think about like our discussions and what we were looking for, those are some of the big themes that I know that we've talked about too.
I've been to the, the meetings, um, and discussed for the redevelopment of the gardens. And I, I know it was a few, uh, bigger projects that's, um, that's coming. Um, are there any co- training co-op programs that is, that is, um, targeting? You know, I mean, a certain age group or bracket to, you know, kind of teach and, and work because there, there are a lot of development areas. That, and, and, and it is a, um, a high demand for workers.
Not that I'm aware, that's Inkster Housing. So Inkster Housing is not part of the city of Inkster's government. But, uh, obviously we're aware of the, the project. I, I didn't hear anybody discussing any type of training programs. I think they, they, uh, it's a joint venture with a private company.
Yeah, I forget the company. That's a big one.
Yeah. So I don't, I don't think that's part of what they're trying to do. I mean, they, they're trying to make money. So.
Right.
Um, they're not going to invest in our city like that. That's, that's really on us to invest in our city.
Right. So it would, it would be you all that will create like a co-op program? And like I said, you know, I'm, I'm kind of speaking from ignorance, but I, in the best way I would suggest that because I, I think that will really prom- promote the, um. Promote the city a lot, you know what I mean? Yeah. With a lot of big projects coming.
Well, keep coming. You're on the right track.
I appreciate you all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the general audience?
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Mayor, um, Nola. I'm hoping this is real simple. I think it is. The, a presentation that was presented by Commissioner Williams. Um, are these updates and, um, suggestions from you or did you have a committee? And you just brought them to the planning commission for their input or is this something that you did? Uh, singular about yourself and you're bringing it to them for their suggestions and updates?
So it's a combination. So consulting, but working with the city cross-departmentally. Is that a word? I guess. But yeah. So, yeah, no, the building and safety, planning, community development, uh, DPS. Fire, police, everyone is giving their input. Um, and then of course, taking those suggestions in addition to the best practices. Um, from our specialists with redevelopment-ready communities or the MEDC. And like taking all of that combined, not to mention our master plan, um, because that does inform a lot of it in putting it all together. Yes.
Okay. So yeah, I just wanted to be clear because I want to make sure, not make sure, but trying to understand because it, it was like you were asking. Them if they were okay with that. So I'm like, okay, so I thought maybe they're already a part of it. So this is something that you had already, um. Did the homework on, researched it, and you're bringing it back to them for their approval, kind of like.
Yes.
That's, because that's what it sound like. Okay. So, okay, that's what I wanted to be clear. So this is nothing set in stone.
No.
These are updates and suggestions that you're bringing.
Based on previous conversations, yep.
Yep. And then so you are planning on having like a committee because it sounds like something that needs a lot of more attention.
Yeah, it's, it's not, it's not just, I, I'm leading it and, uh, the city of Inkster, you know, did put out, you know, a call for a consultant to. Take the lead.
Okay.
So I'm taking the lead, but I'm not doing it in, in a silo. I, I hate using that word because I feel like it gets used so often.
No, 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 no. So, I, so, and it was just the way that I'm, I'm looking at you, you guys engage. So that's what it looked like because I thought it was something that you all had already talked about. But it looked like you had already done the work and you're bringing it to them. And there's nothing wrong with that. I just wanted to be clear.
Yeah.
Specifically because I want to make sure that these are just updates, suggestions and recommendations. But at the end of the day.
Everybody has to.
Everybody's going to say, hey.
Yes.
We want this terminology. We, we don't want these amendments. We do want, uh, our, our one, our one be. All of us to be looked like this or not, not look like that.
Well, and I, I will say like, for example, as far as the district, and I did, uh, we encourage everyone. I know it's a big lengthy document. But the master plan, we have to make sure that we are in alignment with our master plan. Otherwise, there was no point of us creating it, you know? So a lot, like I said, a lot of this is informed. So even the districts are informed by the master plan.
Yes.
Um, so yeah, it wasn't something that was created.
Yeah, I'm well aware of that because you know I'm on.
Yeah, yeah.
On the committee and I'm also under planning commission. But I just wanted to be clear because I'm, I'm trying to read the room or the meeting.
I think this is about our third or fourth update because you updated us like twice. You came to city council meeting and presented as well.
Yeah. I think I was at that one, the one she presented at.
Yeah.
So, and, so I just wanted to be clear on that. That's okay. Uh, uh, don't take it defensively. I'm just one of those analytical people and I'm just trying to make sure I get an understanding. Um, secondly, um. You guys know that I sell land for the city of Inkster and you, and, and I thought it kind of beho- it behooves me for me to bring up the fact. That a young lady wanted to purchase land to, for a modular home. She was a homeowner. She had already had, we had the meeting with, um, Mr. Dowdell, but she was discouraged. By the fact that the, uh, land was ten thousand dollars. And I could not. Talk her into come, just come with half. Because in her mind, it's like, okay, why am I paying ten thousand dollars and I'm going to, and this is just a piece of land, which is already costing a hundred and sixty. She had already been approved. Everything that she had, she brought the plan. She had the developer. She had everything she wanted. And I know this is something that you guys cannot speak on, but I really wanted to bring that to, to the point. Um, that she was very discouraged by the fact that, that, that the market value for this land was ten thousand dollars. This is right on Dartmouth. For, just for the land itself. And so she was discouraged by that, but she was looking to build a home for her family there. I thought that was important for you guys to know. Secondly, and just for clarity. If a building is already in effect, when you talked about Bogarts. And all they want to do is update the building that they're in, they do not have to have any approval.
Well, they still might have to pull permits.
No, I'm saying, um.
There's no more work to do.
So maybe I'm saying it differently. So they don't have to, um. They wouldn't be, they would still be grandfathered in because all they're doing is updates.
Paint, windows, stuff like that.
Change the bricks or whatever. And, and as long as they're keeping the same, um, uh, use.
Same use but no, no additional footage. You're not going up another level. You're not adding an addition. You're not, as long as you're not doing that.
It's almost like a renovation, basically. As long as they're just renovating it for the same purpose. It's, it's normally going to be okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty. And if we have no one else from the general public, we will move.
The, the process for, um, becoming a developer, is there a certification process in the city? There is not. Is there a process to become a certified developer in the city? Some cities have considered it and I just wondered if we had done that. And then also, I didn't see any additional school zoning. In our permitting process. Are we just staying with the land locks that we have with schools? Or are we expanding the areas for that? And the only reason I ask is because.
Are you talking about like charter schools or public schools?
Just public at that, because let's say for instance, we do get the twenty-five million or we do get the fifty million that we need. Then will we have the ability after we meet that criteria to then build again? And I just wondering if we would consider that also.
Most schools are in residential districts. I mean, of course we can do it because we have plenty of residential. Um, but that hasn't been discussed, honestly. Um, so I don't, I don't know where, how that's going to happen.
Well, the only reason that I'm just, uh, because I didn't see it in the actual plan. And so I just want us to be. Mind forward because I think everybody up here seemed to agree that if we're thinking thirty years ahead. Should we still have those type of uses in place so that even if something else has been built on it? That if we need to tear it down, we can. And then we can still rebuild that process. Cause one of the things we know is policing schools. That creates the safe level of environment for, and policing schools and good city councils like yourself and, and commissioners. and policing schools and good city councils like yourself and and commissioners. But having those three things in place means that people now trust to come stay in the city of Inkster. And I think the recidivism issue is that, what you're talking about in terms of why we should have businesses here. And so policing schools and a good city council is a part of that. So I would like for us, when you're thinking about that, if you can also just consider that also. Cuz then that, cuz then the other thing is, it, whoever owns the, the two pieces of property or three pieces of property for that, now, that's now a twenty-five million dollar situation. Cuz now you gotta come in, and I think that's what she was elu- alluding to. You gotta come in and pay twenty-five da- million for a piece of property because now you know that a fifty million dollar school can go on it. And so I just would like for you guys to make sure that you keep that at the forefront of your thinking. Thanks.
Thank you. Alrighty, ladies and gentlemen, we are going to move down to item number six, and that's public hearing, which we have nine. Uh, or no public hearings, I should say. Item number seven is unfinished business. I don't believe we have any there. Item number eight is new business. We have nothing to vote on this evening. And item number nine is miscellaneous, which is a planning mission, twenty twenty-five conference, October twenty-second through the twenty-fourth in Kalamazoo, Michigan. Mr. Dowdell, you have the floor.
Yes, so as, as we mentioned last month about the planning commission, I mean about the, the Michigan, um, APA conference. Um, it was, it was brought to our attention that at least five of you expressed the interest in going to the conference as well as myself. And so I guess we're just trying to make sure that we know who all exactly really wants to go because there is a cost associated with, with the, uh.
Room and board or?
And I was able, um, we, we split an invoice in so that actually all, um, the, the, um, board would become members of APA, which lowered the cost for us to to go. Um, so that they, they sent us an invoice on that. So all nine of you will be getting memberships of, if later on in, in the year or something of that nature, you wanna go. And actually, the, um, APA will be coming to, uh, Detroit in, uh, twenty-sixth, this, this summer. That's great.
Well, thank you. Is that it for that right now?
We just need to get a hard number, like, cuz I know five people express interest. Who's definitely going? One, two, three, for sure. Who's the fourth person?
It was. Cuz I, I'd express interest, um, but I, once I saw the email, when you spoke about the hotel and stuff like that, and then alternative, I was like, I forgot about that part. And so, cuz, and I'm just saying it because when I went to, uh, the mail thing and Franken moved one time, it was all in one building, room and board and all of that. So if you registered, all that came through with your registration. Um, so you'd have to look for somewhere else to, you know, to be at. But I, uh, I'll let you guys.
So I just wanna be clear on that. Right now, we need to look for our own lobbying, right? And then.
We need, that's what I'm trying to get a hard number so the city will tell you what we can do.
What we can do. Okay, gotcha.
Okay. Some of us have to take off work too. Alright, see, I'll do that tomorrow. Alright, if nothing further from that, we're gonna move down to item number ten, second hearing of the public. This is for items not scheduled for a public hearing or on the agenda. I know there was one, um, concern, not, not concern, but it was a statement when we were talking about Bogarts in the parking lot. I pulled up the aerial view of the map. Is this the area? Maybe somewhere right here? The, the new blacktop, okay. Alright, that's, I just wanted to, um, look at that and see cuz I couldn't visually see it at the time. But anybody from the general public who wishes to address this body for items not scheduled for a public hearing or were not on the agenda, you are welcome at this time to approach the podium and state your first and last name for the record.
I just wanted to say I'm loving the work that's being done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Even though it's been hard for me to get some places, but I know it's, I see the light at the end of the tunnel. I'm seeing brand-new sidewalks, but you know, and all this good stuff. So I love that this is happening. Um, I would like to say I hope that we're not pushed. I don't wanna be, hope we're not gonna be, um, like Detroit, you know, we got this beautiful downtown and then you got Harrison still looking like. You know what I'm saying? So because Harrison is like, you know, Harrison could be so beautiful. And I'm not understanding why, cuz I've been trying to get, I'm even trying to get folk to buy land. So we can just start building somewhere there and bring it within our city. So we don't just come downtown and say, oh, it's beautiful. And then you go just two blocks over and it's like, oh my God, and then we just forget about the people. But, um, I definitely wanted to make sure I say that, Mr. Mayor. It's looking beautiful.
Well, people are, I can't talk to you. They say, hey, you gotta fix the road. We're coming, you gotta fix it.
Yes, yes.
Road is some bad shit.
Oh, God, yes it is.
Yes, yes, but I went down Emerson, that whole, I wish that was Somerset. They got brand-new sidewalks. I didn't know y'all was on sidewalks.
Coming, it's coming to your neighborhood.
Okay, it's coming to my neighborhood, okay.
Um, I don't know, but.
Is there, um, for the, for, uh, HOA fees, um, is there any districts or areas that you all will implement that, just for security purposes? Because I think that's the biggest issue for like, like developments outside.
HOA, that's homeowner association fee. Right now, the city of Inkster doesn't have any homeowners, uh, uh, no condo associations right now.
There are none?
Are you asking about us imposing or are you asking are there entities in the city that have their own HOAs?
That and will you all be imposing?
No, you, you can't, that. Homeowner association fee, no. But we do act on one?
Have some entities.
I live in one.
Right.
Oh, they have it?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So districts, so districts itself, it, they can't go up under a, a HOA?
No, 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 that, that's the, that's the individual, um, develop, that's the development. So that, that, that has, that's unrelated to the, to any type of municipality.
The developer, right?
Yeah, it's, yeah, that's a development. So like, say for instance.
We have at least three.
Yeah, yeah, and, uh, they actually are charging, uh, HOA fees?
We're in the Meadows. The Meadows has a fee.
Stratford Place.
Stratford does too.
Maybe Annapolis Point, I'm not sure.
And Annapolis Point used to, but I think they consider Annapolis Point now as a PUD, right? Is that Annapolis Point a PUD?
It was, um, it was, it was always a PUD.
So then they're, then they're. So, so basically with, with a, um, a homeowner association fee, that is, that is charged by the development. So let's say you have an area that is designated as a condominium, uh, development. That developer will charge for the common areas to be maintained, insurances, et cetera, lawn care, snow removal, et cetera, et cetera. That's where those homeowner associate fees and also pay the taxes, uh, uh, property taxes, um, special assessment, like you were asking about street lighting, if that particular, uh, association, that development doesn't have street lighting, uh, any type of special assessments, that's where a homeowner association fee would be assessed. But that, that's not a fee associated with municipalities, period.
I appreciate that. So what is the city planning on doing in security purposes? Like, are you guys planning on allocating budgets towards the police departments or, like, how would you, uh, attack that?
We already do that.
Yeah, that, that's, that's part of, that's part of municipal government.
Yeah, it's part of the budget every year, so before June thirtieth, when we vote on the budget for the fiscal year.
Yeah, that makes sense. I appreciate it.
Just my last set of questions specifically for this, um.
We're not competing with each other.
So the thought about, man, you made me lose my thought. So the first thing is the park next to the Malcolm X Center. I, I think that logically it should be MDR two or some advanced multi-youth space. And and I, and I just want us to really take a real look at that because it's the only logical park that we now from ground up that's already leveled, that already has the, the placements um, in it. And we don't currently use it as a park realistically like we do at the one at the, uh, uh, beach in Carlisle. That is actually used by children. And I know we do play basketball right there next to the center, but the actual park itself is not used. And so I would ask this commission, even if I'm not the builder, I would like to be, but, and, and slash developer, but I would like for this commission to consider that a serious development because it's just time for them, for Inkster not to have misused space because we wanna get, be good stewards of what we do with our properties. And so I'd encourage you, as you are looking at Carlisle, that the Malcolm X Center, if you start there with a Malcolm X place, then there are mixed-use abilities for that, considering both up and considering on, on grade property so that we can now, because I think that really, a lot of, we're putting a lot of, um, attention on the Michigan Avenue corridor, which you said, cuz that's what people see when they're high traffic and that's what brings business. But recidivism is really where you actually stay and you live. And so if we can create more of that warm cozy coffee cookie feeling environment, I think that we would have the ability. And a person like me would look forward to having one or two developments. And then by the time that comes open, if it does, that we would have people like me competing for it and not the larger developments. But the other piece is making sure we're not calling mixed-use space double, triple and quad level high, avo- opposed to being able to have mixed use truly for what the term is, meaning you can build at grade and you can build going up high. So that now we can as a city say yes to something that's gonna be more representative of us opposed to us coming a skyscraper slash inner-city residential area where there's that but, abutment of those two things and they don't really go together. And so I want us to consider that. So if you please, those particular things. And also because I, I am the master builder for Habitat for Humanity. So if you wanna add that as a, as a, uh, at-large person to go to your meeting there in Kalamazoo, I would welcome that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go right ahead.
Resident of the city. I don't know if this is the, uh, proper meeting for it, but I know there's world repair all over the city. But, uh, this particular area that I live on, on the corner of Helen and Avondale, it seems like that part of the street is about to cave in. And I was wondering, I don't know if there's planning coming up for that particular area. I know they did a great job working on parts of Avondale. But from old Harrison all the way to John Daly, uh, there's some more work that needs to be repaired. But on the corner of Helen and Avondale, there's a particular area where that road.
That approach right there, yeah.
Right. It seems like it's about to cave in. And I was wondering if this committee can address it to whatever department that you need to address it to. Can they take a look at it?
No, we, I'm, I'm aware of it for sure. Uh, that, that'd be at DPS. But it's, Avondale's gonna be finished, so we, we're not done. They just ran out of money. You know, when COVID hit, the price of everything went up. And that's why they went from concrete, from Henry Roof to Middle Bell. And then at some point, they switched over to blacktop. And, but we haven't even got Inkster Road yet. So we did, we gotta go Inkster Road and finish that phase. Then we gotta go Inkster Road to John Daly, John Daly to Beach Daly. Um, so it's ha- it's coming. I know exactly what you're talking about. It, it's pretty bad, um, to Helen, Helen and Avondale.
Yeah, it looked like they would've did something with that particular part right there because, uh, it may cave in and I hate to see somebody, you know.
That'd be bad. I see sinkholes in other communities, like huge, you know, sinkholes, but hopefully we're not gonna have that. Yeah, it's, it's, uh, that's the next strip that's gonna be finished.
He just mentioned it to me too the other night, and I told him, uh, cuz as a matter of fact, I left, neighborhood watcher came over to the city hall for the friends in the rouge and saw Mr. Bivens and we were supposed to be following up on that. Alrighty, um, we're down to, what is this A word, guys? Adjournment? It's been property bulls. Is there a second? Multiple seconds, all in favor. All opposed. The meeting is now adjourned to eight forty-three P M.